But the substance of tonight's event was really driven from the grassroots level. We crowdsourced the questions and topics for tonight from the Belvedere Neighborhood listserv as well as social media. We got about sixty-four really excellent questions, which we synthesized with the help of ChatGPT and sort of categorized into the main topics and issues that people were interested in based on the questions that we received. So the committee reviewed the questions, made sure that ChatGPT had done its job well in interpreting the questions in the major categories. And we sent a final list of questions, which is about thirty-five questions in seven or eight categories, along with the rules and guidelines and the original set of questions that were submitted to the candidates a couple of weeks ago, just so that everyone, you know, had plenty of time to prepare and really understood the event format and the scope of the discussion that we'd be having tonight. We are extremely lucky to have Ryan Feria, who is the co-chair of the Highlands Neighborhood Association and has been in that role for the past several years, to moderate tonight's event. I did just want to emphasize, the questions were presented to the candidates in advance. There are thirty-five of them. We would be here until tomorrow if we tried to answer all of those. So the questions that will be asked tonight will sort of be one or two per category, and that's entirely at the discretion of the moderator. So the event planning committee, only Ryan knows at this point which questions are actually going to be asked and which questions the candidates will have the opportunity to answer live this evening. If you are interested in following along or curious about sort of the scope of the questions and things that your neighbors are interested in, there were some hard copies of the questions and the rules and guidelines on the welcome table. We also sent those out in the Belvedere Neighborhood Association listserv yesterday, so you could call up that email. And then a third option is, if you go to the Belvedere Neighborhood Association Instagram, there's a link in the bio section for the Belvedere Neighborhood Association page where you could also call up those documents if you were interested in following along. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan. I just wanted to thank you again so much for being here this evening, and I hope to see a lot of you on September seventeenth and at future meetings. Thank you.
Alrighty. Everybody can hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming to tonight's candidate forum. A quick glance, it looks like a pretty big crowd. That's not to mention the folks who are live streaming on LTC as well. As Meredith mentioned, my name is Ryan Feria, and I serve as the co-chair of the Highlands Neighborhood Association, where I've had the honor of previously moderating candidate forums over there. I'm extremely grateful to the Belvedere Neighborhood Association for asking me to moderate tonight's event, and I'm looking forward to a great evening of getting to know these four candidates, all vying to represent you, the constituents of District Three. Now, before we begin, I'd like to take a quick step back and just go over the City of Lowell's current election format. Up until 2019, the city council consisted of nine individuals who all ran at large. That changed in 2021, where there's now eleven counselors, three at large, and eight by district. So now, each person can only vote for up to four people. In 2021, the Belvedere race consisted of three well-known incumbent counselors, John Leahy, Bill Samaras, and Dave Conway. This was a prelim race that included all incumbents, the only one at the time. In 2023, Belvedere was one of only two districts that did not have a contested race, where John Leahy won again as the only name on the ballot. Now, in 2025, for just the second time in the short history of this new election format, we have four candidates on the ballot for a district seat. We're excited to have them here for a great discussion tonight. Before we begin, let's discuss the event format for tonight. We're going to start off by allotting each candidate two minutes to provide an opening statement. We'll then move to the question portion of the event, where there will be eight different questions asked to all candidates, who will each have two minutes to respond. We will rotate the order in which the candidates respond to the questions. Following the questions, we will move to a lightning round, where candidates will be asked simple questions with responses of one word or one sentence, taking no more than just a few seconds. Finally, candidates will each get thirty seconds to provide a closing statement. Well, we do have a couple of timers tonight who will be in charge of timing each response. There will be a few different signs for thirty seconds remaining, as well as ten seconds remaining. This ensures candidates don't go over their allotted response time. We do ask the audience tonight, please hold all applause until the conclusion of the event. That would be greatly appreciated. One final note I do want to reiterate, Meredith has previously mentioned, these questions are being crowdsourced directly from the Belvedere residents. Now, without further ado, let's begin with opening statements. We will start with Cory Belanger, who is alphabetically our first candidate. Cory?
Thank you. For starters, I would like to thank Meredith and the BNA group and the committee for this forum this evening. I wish to thank Ryan for being the moderator this evening and all the great work you do in the Highlands, Ryan. Thank you very much. And to our good friends at LTC for broadcasting this event. But my name is Cory Belanger. I have been your district council for just over twelve months. And my message during this campaign season has been very clear and consistent. I am running on twenty-five years of experience in local government, serving you in accomplishments. During this time, in just over twelve months, much progress has been done on our streets, our sidewalks, our parks, our open spaces, and much will continue if I am elected. I have been serving you for over ten years on the zoning board of appeals prior to getting elected. I was chairman of the opioid task force for ten years prior to getting elected. I have served three terms in the Lowell City Council. I am one of the original founders of Whitthefest back in two thousand, if you can imagine that. I have been involved with the Lowell Folk Festival for over twenty years. I have vast knowledge and experience in all facets of government. Now, to walk into this position just over twelve months, to fill in the shoes of such a monumental task, of filling in for former councillor John Leahy, who's here tonight, is a huge task, and I believe I've done that. I have delivered on your requests, gotten back to you your various texts, your emails. I have gotten back to you in a very responsive and timely manner, and for the most part, have gotten positive results. And that will continue if I'm elected. Now, the city's future, let me tell you, is very bright, but it's very challenging at the same time. And we are going to need experienced leadership to navigate us through these difficult times. And I will be asking for your vote on September ninth, and you will know where I stand on the various issues. But thank you all for being here tonight.
That's quite the follow-up. It's quite hard to follow up to Cory, right? He's been in this business for a long time. But I'm Dan Finn. I'm fifty-three years old, born and raised. I'm sorry, yeah. Everyone hear me now? I'm born and raised in Lowell. I've been in Belvedere for twenty years now. I live over off of Hubby Street. I, excuse me, I'm sorry. I'm a graduate of Lowell High School. I'm employed by the Middlesex Sheriff's Office. I hold the title of Assistant Deputy Superintendent, and my job responsibilities with the Sheriff's Department is policy. I think that's something that I can bring to the council. I review and revise policies as needed. Our agency has eight hundred and fifty employees, similar to the City of Lowell, who has over a thousand employees. So it's pretty relative. I've been married to my wife Tracy for twenty-five years. We celebrated our twenty-fifth anniversary in May. We have four children together, two boys and two girls. One just graduated from UMass Amherst. The other one I dropped off this morning, and he's a junior at UMass Amherst. I have my daughter Danielle, who is a junior at the high school. And I have my campaign manager Nora sitting in the front row, making sure I'm doing what I'm supposed to do. I'm the president of Friends of Lowell High, and I also sit on the board of the Athletic Hall of Fame for Lowell High School. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I would appreciate your consideration on September ninth. Thank you.
Thank you all for being here, and thank you to the Belvedere Neighborhood Group for putting this together. My name is Erin Gendron, and I am so happy and proud to be running for Lowell City Council. Lowell has been my home for some of the most important parts of my life. It's where I earned my degree. It's where I started my career as a social worker. It's where I met my husband Steve, and it's where we're choosing to raise our two boys. As a social worker, I have helped some of the city's most vulnerable: children, elders, and those struggling with mental health to navigate some of our most complex systems. For the past five years, I've served the city on the Board of Health. We've been able to help the city to manage serious health and safety challenges. I believe that we have some of the same hopes. I hope for a Lowell where families feel safe, where our downtown is vibrant, and where all neighborhoods feel welcoming. We want safe streets. We want strong schools. We want green space, and we want opportunities that will make us feel proud to be raising our children here. A year and a half ago, my husband and I went to the city council to talk about a change that was made on Andover Street to the intersection of Andover and River Road. The change that was made has created an accelerator into our neighborhood. Andover Street goes from two to one lane. When we went to the council, we were met with apathy. Safety has no place with apathy. I want to be a strong voice for District Three. I want to make sure that your concerns are met with action and not apathy. I believe that I will bring a fresh perspective that is much needed to the city council. On September ninth, when you're in the voting booth, please run with Gendron. Sorry.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Belinda Duran. My demonstrated experience, qualifications, and commitment to Lowell make me ready to be the District Three City Councilor. My working-class family taught me the values of hard work and discipline, which led to a college scholarship and my first career as a software engineer. Earning my MBA while working full-time, I learned communications, marketing, strategy, and finance. Harvard Law School led to a second career at Wilmer Hill in Boston, where I negotiated large contracts for biotechs, including public-private partnerships. I have solved complex problems with long-term solutions that address clients' needs while anticipating risk. I have participated in long-term strategic planning and have ensured that both the corporate clients I advised and the nonprofit boards that I serve on were well-governed, so that boards and management teams worked well together, respecting each other's lanes while also holding each other accountable. I research urban issues, immigration, homelessness, and human behavior to anticipate the changes and challenges that will affect Lowell. I've met with national leaders of homeless initiatives, as well as our homeless neighbors at Elliott Church. For fifteen years, I've served on Lowell nonprofit boards, including UTech, the Library Foundation, and the International Institute. And during the pandemic, I volunteered to create databases for the city and CTI to help our businesses and restaurants. I've championed Lowell for four years by publishing a newsletter to remind everyone how wonderful this city is. And I am ready to be your next city councilor. Thank you.
Thank you. The first question, the first response is going to be Dan Finn, and the topic is going to be public safety, infrastructure, and transportation. Many residents have expressed concerns about speeding vehicles, pedestrian and bicycle safety, and the need for improved traffic calming measures. If elected, how would you address these neighborhood safety concerns, and specifically, what areas would you prioritize for safety improvements?
Well, this is my wheelhouse: public safety. I've been doing it for the last twenty-eight years. I'm sorry. I've been doing, a little nervous. I've been doing it for the last twenty-eight years. I write policies for public safety. I think that we need to look at the laws that we have in place in order to now enforce them. I don't believe that we're giving our police department the ability at this moment in time to enforce things like speeding and, you know, things like that. I think that we need to let our police force do their job and not handcuff them. As far as specifics, I think we have traffic slowing measures, we can put speed bumps in, but it's all going to come from the people of Belvedere. Whatever it is that you want, you need to let me know if I'm going to be your councilor. You need to let me know what street you live on and where you want these traffic calming measures being done. I know that there, when I'm out knocking, there are individuals that say they love them, they can't wait to get them on their street. There are other individuals that say that they don't want them. You know, so it's going to be up to the residents to determine what it is that I do as a councilor. Your message will be given through me at the city council. Thank you.
Traffic calming measures is something that I have done a lot of research on. This topic is so important to me, I brought it up in my opener. So traffic calming is a science. There's a science to it. It's not just putting speed bumps and speed humps in different places. That's speed reduction. Traffic calming is something else, and there are things that we can do. Andover Street is a speed highway. It is very dangerous. One thing that is a traffic calming measure, so right now, we have bike lanes, but they're not a traffic calming measure because it's just a painted line. By putting raised delineators, that's a natural traffic calming measure. By adding islands, we can put islands on Andover Street. We have to work with our state delegation, but it is possible, and that is a natural traffic calming measure. By reducing the width of the road, so Douglas Road just got sidewalks, that reduces the size of your road. That's a natural traffic calming measure. These are all things that we are able to do, that we can do within our city, and it is possible. the gateway to our city, when we drive into Andover Street, it should not look like a highway. It should look like you are driving in through a neighborhood, because that is a way that we can calm the traffic and make Andover safer for everyone. Thank you.
So the first thing that people look to government to do is to ensure their safety. And we have experts, both in the city and elsewhere, that we can rely on. Liz Altman, the traffic engineer in the city, is really amazing. But we also have the Sustainability Council, we have the police, we have information from Pride Star EMS. We need to listen and learn from them, because they know what they're doing. But there are also experts outside of Lowell that we should be looking at and adopting best practices from them. Ultimately, there needs to be a plan for how we address traffic calming, potholes, and everything else. We have maps on the city website of the road ratings for every road in the city, and yet I'm not sure that our plans for pavement actually follow the map based on, you know, which are the worst roads. The city council is not responsible for paving the roads. It is responsible for setting the policy, for working with city management to try to ensure that what is done is consistent with the plan, and when emergencies arise or key needs arise, looking at the plan and determining whether it needs to change. So we need to listen as a city council, help set policy, communicate information to people and from residents to the city, but also empower our teams to do what they are skilled at doing. And so I think that would be, generally, I think we should remember the city council's role is really as a board of directors, setting policy, communicating, and working with the management team. Thank you.
Oh, there you go. Sorry. No, really, I'm sorry. Thank you, Dan. Well, thank you for the question, Ryan, and I'm glad we got it, because this is one of the biggest issues for the last twelve, thirteen months that I've been serving you. Now, in order to enhance bicycle safety, it is a multi-pronged approach. Traffic calming, first and foremost. I don't like to hear about speeding in our neighborhoods when we have families with young children. That does not sit well. So what have I done? And not from just listening to my constituents the last twelve months. I've been serving for decades. I've heard many of your voices. Fairmount Street, up on the hill, for years screaming about the speeding as it's a cut through to stop the queuing on Nesmith. I got speed humps done. Okay? After many, many years of waiting, Wentworth Ave, another cut through. Okay? Speed humps are coming in the fall. These are things that have been talked about for years that I'm getting done. Now, many of you, like myself, may have went down Draper Street accidentally. You may have noticed permanent speed humps on that street. That was not part of the original plan, people. That was done last fall, because we were ahead of the paving schedule, and by me canvassing Draper, informing you, getting the concerns, speeding was a factor, because the drop-off, the parents obviously wanting to get in and out quick, speeding was a major issue. If not every door. I'm not kidding. I got speed humps there as well. That neighborhood is, that district and neighborhood is very, very happy. Douglas Road just got paved. Speed humps are coming there, too. So these are all done. That's four streets that I've gotten done in just over twelve months. Give me a full term, and you will see what I can do. This is an issue that we're not going to tolerate in our neighborhoods, as Belvedere is a big cut through from across the river to get to the highways. So it's going to be one street at a time, people. East Merrimack Street, Clark Road, you're next. That's what I have on the radar to get done for next year. You are a top priority to me, and I will listen and prioritize from input from you, but that will be a work in progress. If I can get three to four streets done per year, we're going to be in very good shape in no time.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
All righty. The next question is going to begin with Erin Gendron, and the category is going to be neighborhood equity and representation. Prior to the new district format, Belvedere had a long history of very strong representation on the at-large council, which has lent itself to a broader perception of the Belvedere neighborhood receiving more than its fair share of city resources. If elected, how would you balance representing both the Belvedere neighborhood, as well as the broader needs of the city, in a manner that allows for an equitable allocation of city resources for all residents?
Okay. Accessibility, advocacy, solution-focused resolution. Those are three things that are transferable skills from my experience as a social worker. That is the way that you represent the people of our neighborhood. Being able to listen, being able to advocate, and to look at the problem with the solution-focused. I think that every councillor should be thinking about and trying to make sure that all the parts of our city are going well. A rising tide lifts all boats. We need to make sure that our downtown is successful. We need to make sure that every neighborhood is successful, because that is how we will always successful. As far as the narrative that District Three gets more than other neighborhoods, I don't subscribe to that narrative. I don't think it's true. I think that under district representation, we get, we kind of almost get less, and by following that narrative, we definitely get less. I want to fight for what it is that our neighborhoods need. That's my goal. I want to be the strong voice for Lowell. I think we have an example. So in July of last year, we all put our names forward, and we all advocated to have a special election last year. The council, I mean, there were thirty people that showed up and spoke and said, "We want a special election." That's what District Three wants. And the council made the decision to appoint and not allow District Three to have a voice and to vote for, to have a special election. So I don't subscribe to that narrative. I will be a strong voice for our city, and I want to make sure that our concerns are brought forward and that we get what we need in our city. Thank you.
So having knocked now on a couple of thousand doors in our neighborhood, I have confirmed that our neighbors are not myopic or self-centered. The people in Belvedere want what is best for the city as a whole. They understand that we're stronger when we focus on the city as a whole. My motto, "We are all ovelians," reflects that. People want a strong downtown to attract visitors from near and far, including people from Belvedere who don't necessarily go downtown. The parks that are in Belvedere also attract people from across the city and really from outside the city, when we think of Colley Stadium and Shed Park. So those are resources that are here, but really available to everyone. So when we look at the city as a whole, we should not think about dividing our pie into eighths. We should be thinking about growing the pie, and that requires having plans to think about what is needed in this city to make it successful for everybody. And again, the city council needs to advocate for the city to start planning things long-term and communicating both the needs of residents to the city management, but also what the city management is planning, communicating that back to the residents. So I think if we think about this city as a whole, we will all be better off. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan, for the question, but the perception here of Belvedere getting more than other districts is exactly that. It's a perception. Now, in 2020, prior to 2021's election, Belvedere was the inspiration for the district change. There's no doubt about it. But, you know, we were penalized for voting. Make no mistake about it. But it's worked out. It's worked out. I've joined tremendously, being your representative, I'm allowed to focus with laser focus on the district, so I'm very happy with it, and I think it's worked out. But I'm not going to let this district be punished for voting and being very engaged, as you all are. Now, what I'm going to do, my approach is going to be, whatever the issue is or allotment, I'm going to assess our needs, and I'm going to give you an example. Parks and open spaces, okay? We have three, four, five times than other districts. Shed Park, Fort Hill, The Pine School, The Cemetery are eighty-five acres of green space, not to mention Kittredge Park, Veterans Park, et cetera. So I may want more than our fair share, and I've done that by landing another million dollars in FY26 capital budget for Shed Park Fieldhouse, the tennis courts. So I continue to deliver in that regard. But for instance, the downtown got a brand-new $400 million high school. That's education. I don't fault them for that. So it all depends on the needs and the allotment, but if you're looking for me to not fight for this district, I may not be your candidate. But I'm here as your representation, not under the best circumstances, people. We know that appointment was not good for anybody, no doubt about it. But there's a reason why the council voted for me, because they have the most experience, and I could hit the ground running. And by the way, the three challenges all applied, too, and respectfully would have taken it. I say that respectfully. But tonight is all about my service to you and what I've done to you and what I plan to continue.
Thank you, Cory.
All right. So District Three and being favoritism, right? I don't think that it's the case. Like Cory said, we have the largest amount of open space throughout the city. So for District Three, I'm going to fight for what it is that we deserve and to keep our parks and open space up to par. As far as the rest of the city, yeah, I'm not only going to be District Three's councillor, I'm going to be a city councillor, and I'm going to fight for equal right for everyone in every open space that needs to be addressed. So that's my stance on it. I will fight for what it is that we need. I will be your district representative, but at the same time, I am not going to disregard the rest of the city. I will be a city councillor for the rest of the city, and that's my answer.
This next question is going to begin with Belinda Duran, and the topic is housing affordability. According to the National Association of Realtors, the median age of first-time home buyers has risen from twenty-nine years old to thirty-eight years old since 1985. During that same timeframe, the median cost of purchasing a house has risen from about ninety-five thousand to four hundred and ten thousand. While housing affordability is clearly not an issue unique to Lowell, we are a city which is predominantly made up of renters, many of whom feel that homeownership is getting increasingly out of reach. If elected, what would be your strategy to make positive changes on housing affordability at the local level?
So I think it's wonderful that so many people want to live in Lowell. I mean, this is an amazing city, and it's diverse in so many dimensions, including not only homeownership and, sorry, homeownership versus renters, but different housing types, different neighborhood feel. And that's important for us to keep in mind and to preserve. So I don't think that we should ever go down a path where Belvedere should look like downtown or have the density of downtown. We need to preserve a broad and diverse city. And we need to balance affordable housing with market-rate housing, to attract businesses, to attract, again, a broad variety of people. I don't think we're ever going to be able to build our way to affordability. The cost of construction keeps rising for various global and national reasons, and the financial market generally requires a strong return on investment for investors to contribute money to developers. So So fortunately, hopefully, the Front Runner City project will lead us down a path where we can attract low-interest loans from sovereign funds and other investment vehicles. But the city is going to have to keep a very close eye on the terms of those deals to ensure that the city's interests are protected. To the extent that we can also subsidize affordable housing, we may have to go that route. But at this point, I don't see that we're going to get that money from the federal or government or therefore also the state government. So I think that's not likely in the near term. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Ryan, because that's one thing, this is one question that or issue that we can almost all agree on 100%. There's definitely a housing crisis and affordability crisis going on, not only in the city but throughout the country. College graduates and Gen Z is, I guess, hence the term, are really, really up against the people. But this city council has acknowledged that, okay? We are very committed to affordable housing. Lowell has three to four times affordable housing what is required by state law, okay? And that's great. And by no means am I drawing a line in the sand. We need to improve on that wherever possible. But we are heavily reliant on state subsidies due to a few reasons. The interest rates are still sky-high. We need some help there. Construction costs are very inflated at the same time, causing a perfect storm with new construction. But Lowell will soon be, thanks to the efforts of the city council, will soon be bucking that trend with the Front Runner City. Wait till you see, I hope you all received my mailer that I sent out last week informing you of this initiative and what it's going to do for our city in housing and increasing the tax base. But what this council and I would like to focus on, and we are, is first-time homeownership. So this young generation could start building wealth at a young age when they're up against it, like right now. So we have started and I voted for an Affordable Housing Trust Fund that has over $3 million in just over 12 months. Some of that will go through down payment assistance and affordability and our new construction, our courthouses, that this will be pegged for. So we're going to help them. We want to retain our youth in the city so they stay here and raise their families. That's the goal and that's what we'll accomplish if I'm elected. Thank you very much.
So homeownership, right, for the younger generation that is trying to buy a home. I feel it at home. I have conversations with my two boys and we discuss how they're going to have to live in my basement for the next 20 years in order to afford a house. I feel bad for this generation. I feel bad that they can't afford a home. Unfortunately, within Lowell, we're maxed out, right? We have congested areas as is and I don't suggest we just start building affordable housing on every empty lot. I'm against it. That's where I stand on it. ADUs, I'm against them. I don't think that we need to clutter our neighborhoods any more than they are already cluttered. And so I feel bad. But as growing up, you know, if you couldn't afford to live in the city that you were in, unfortunately, you had to sometimes make the move out. And it's maybe not the answer that everybody wants to hear, but it's the reality. If you can't afford, I'm too close? No, not close enough? If you can't afford to live in the city, I feel for you. But we as the taxpayers can't continue to take on the burden of building affordable housing for individuals that can't afford to live within the city. It's unfortunate, but that's what it is. Thank you.
I am sensitive to the housing needs of the people in our city. I see it within my own family. I see it within friends that it is really, really difficult for first-time home buyers right now. I know that we have some really good programs that hopefully will remain to be able to help first-time home buyers. I do think that there is a way for, when we're building in dense areas, we can use smart density planning. There's a building that went up pretty recent on Cabot Street. It's about six units. It has a small footprint, but it also has parking that's built right into the building. And I think that that got a variance to be able to build it because it wasn't a dense lot. Things like that are smart building that will help with affordable housing, but we can't do it, we can't just do that everywhere. I think our zoning and planning boards are important and we do have a very permissive planning zoning board. We allow more than what other cities similar to us do. So I think that when we look at density, as long as we're looking at smart planning, it's possible. But parking is an issue and those are things that need to be taken into account when we look at building housing in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is going to begin with Cory Belanger and the topic is going to be economic development and downtown revitalization. The saying, "There's a lot to like about Lowell," still rings true today. With major investments coming down the pike such as the Link Project, development in the Hamilton Canal District, and most recently with Lowell being named the first U.S. city to receive Front Runner City status, the future looks bright. If elected, what would you do to help revitalize our downtown neighborhood and support small businesses all across the city?
Thank you for the question, Ryan. It's a very good one. Well, many of you, you may be aware, I was a downtown businessman 15 years. So I've lived it. I've been in the small entrepreneur shoes for many, many years and I know the challenges in the downtown very, very well. But change is in the air, people. The Front Runner City initiative is going to be monumental for our city. It's so exciting. Housing, commerce, amenities, all in the surroundings of the downtown. We've identified parcels all surrounding the downtown. That's going to help tremendously. Now, what we need to do is work more closely and allocate funds to the Lowell Development Financial Corporation, known as the LDFC, which is a small loan pool, which yours truly used back in 1999. Low-interest business loans that normally, when I, it would have been 9%, 10% interest and I would have not been able to survive thanks to this pass-through initiative that we have here in the city of Lowell. That is a huge factor in small businesses, but they need help from us. Now, with this Front Runner City initiative, and by the way, this isn't something that fell in our lap, people. This is something that when the opportunity presented itself, this city council went and got last November. Now, the, many of my colleagues as we speak are in Geneva right now finalizing all the parameters of the project. I personally had too much responsibility district to attend, but I have full confidence in them. That partnered with the Link Project, what UMass Lowell was going to bring, all this research and development, innovation, defense contracts, all these companies are going to be here in the city before you know it. And by the way, all taxable, people. All taxable, which is going to help our tax base. So we're going to work hard for the downtown businesses.
Thank you, Cory.
Thank you.
See, you started the question off with, "There's a lot to like about Lowell." And it's funny, I had a conversation this afternoon with some neighbors, I believe they're in the audience, and we discussed the fact that we used to use that as our motto, right? "There's a lot to like about Lowell." And we don't use it as often anymore because a lot of things have changed. I think it begins with changing us back to, "There's a lot to like about Lowell," is to do curb appeal. And right now, we don't have a lot of curb appeal downtown. You walk downtown, there's homelessness, there's individuals with mental health issues, there's storefronts that aren't, that don't have anything in them. I think it starts there. I think that we need to relieve some of the problems downtown to attract individuals in industry to come to Lowell. And I know the Front Runner City is going to give us that ability. But at the same time, we have to present well in order for industry to make their way here. The way we present right now, industry walks in, walks through downtown, I'm not sure that they're going to want to stay, right? We had the Hamilton Canal District, we had an individual there who was a very smart businessman. He walked away from us. We have to wonder, why did he walk away? Was it because he didn't see a vision, because we're not doing the little things that we need to do in order to curb our curb appeal? I think that may have been the case. That's just my thoughts on it. I think that we need to start small. I'm getting to 30 seconds. I haven't got that yet. I'm a fast talker and I just want to get to the point. I think that we need to start with the small things and we need to clean up downtown before we can ever expect businesses to come and engage with us. Thank you.
So I am very hopeful and optimistic the Front Runner City will come here and do all of these amazing things for me, for us, for our city. I do think that we can't put all the eggs in that basket and, but there are exciting things that are happening in Lowell and that if we can get them moving, then it'll be great and that will attract stuff. So when Front Runner City was here, they liked the Link Project. So the Link Project is going to bring $600 million of taxable revenue to the city. They're going to bring good jobs and they're already here. The footprint's already here. We already know what the Link Project is, what UMass Lowell is trying to do and what it's going to accomplish. Draper Labs is already here. So by looking at the Link Project and having a seat at the table, making sure that our infrastructure around that project is something that is workable, that will attract other things. I am very supportive of a bid district, a business improvement district. So that is the little things. That's making downtown welcoming. It's making it cleaner. It's making sure that it is safe for people to feel, to have a safer feel of downtown. I also think that we need to have boots on the ground in talking to our small businesses. So my husband works in an industry of sales and Mark's Running celebrated 22 years of business ownership in downtown Lowell. And I think that everybody loves a ribbon cutting, but we need to celebrate the businesses that are small but stay here. That's important.
So I think we need a multi-pronged approach, starting with the experts that we have like Ally Carter, who is our Economic Development Head, who is working with downtown business owners to create a business improvement district. She's working on the ground with them so that they are the ones who are leading the discussions with the landlords that they're, of the spaces they occupy, to try to get them on board with, in effect, taking on a small additional tax burden so that the city and its businesses can work together to improve the downtown. I think she's doing a great job and taking the right approach on that. We have opportunities with Link and Front Runner and the Hamilton Canal District, which really in many ways are public-private partnerships. We have to plan those and we have to think about what the city is both contributing and getting out of each of those and negotiating hard to ensure that we don't end up with unintended consequences like a private garage in Hamilton Canal without the strong related development that we need. We need those partnerships to be win-win and the city should not downplay what we bring to the table. We really are an amazing city and we shouldn't let some of the fact that we don't look like a downtown of the 80s, you know, bring us down. We really bring the best and we deserve the best. We should also all be role models and actually shop downtown and we have amazing stores there. We go to dinner there, my husband and I. Let's all try to remember why in part this city is amazing and help our, you know, help improve it personally and really make our own investment in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will begin with Dan Finn and the topic is government transparency and accountability. The three major roles of the city council are to create policy, approve budgets, and hire and review the city manager. If elected, how would you work to improve communication with residents on major city decisions as well as ensure that the manager and each department are effectively performing their duties to the city and its residents?
Thank you. Stop going first. So, I'm drawing a blank. I apologize. Do you mind repeating the question?
Sure. The three major roles of the city council are to create policy, approve budgets, and hire and review the city manager. If elected, how would you work to improve communication with residents on major city decisions as well as ensure that the manager and each department are effectively performing their duties to the city and its residents?
Okay. So how do we communicate with the residents that we represent? Cory has initiated a public town meeting. That would be something that I would do monthly. I want to bring your voice to the city council. It isn't going to be Dan Finn's decision on what's being done inside of District Three. Dan Finn is going to listen to the voters and bring your message to the city council and do what it is that you want me to do. I think that sometimes politicians decide that they're going to do what they want to do. That's not going to be the case with me. What you want me to bring to the city council, I am going to bring to the city council. Your ideas, your thoughts, the things that you want. I think that's important for you to know that, that I don't have any ties to anybody on the council. I'm not going to be led around by anybody on the council. My decisions are going to be based on what it is that the District Three residents want. I cannot stress that enough, that that is going to be what I do. As far as accountability for the managers, I'm a manager. I do internal audits. I, we do evaluations and I think those are things that we should be utilizing within the city. We should do evaluations of the individuals that are working for the managers to make sure that they're doing what it is that their job responsibilities are. And if they're not, I'm not talking about firing people. We need to bring them in and have a conversation with them and make sure that they're living up to what it is that is expected. If they're not doing what it is that is expected, then we need to move on from them. There's plenty of people that need jobs and if you're not willing to do the job that your responsibilities are asked of you, then someone else is ready to fall in line and do that job. Thank you.
So the first part of the question was about how do people get information and how will I share information? So I have a very, so people receive information right now from a very, big variety of sources. I have a very active social media page, Instagram and Facebook. I also write a monthly newsletter just to kind of say what my campaign has been doing and to let people know. Another transferable skill from being a social worker is to meet people where they're at. So I'm out at the parks with my kids, I'm at events in downtown. I'm where you are. And if we're honest, I mean, I think I could hold a coffee hour at Market Basket because I'm there every day. The other part was about reviewing managers. So I, I'm a union employee and I was a union stew for seven years. So one of the things that the state has is an employee performance review system. So you set a goal and you have benchmarks and then you're reviewed on those benchmarks. It's an unbiased, not judgmental, but it's, this is the benchmark and if you meet it, then, you know, you get a gold star, like, great, that's awesome, you know? But if you're not, then we set more goals and try to get you to that point. It's not necessarily all about progressive discipline, but I mean, that's part of it, right? We need to hold people accountable and to make sure that the jobs are getting done to move our city forward. So I'll see you at Market Basket.
So I think communication can be improved in so many ways. Not all of the city boards and commissions put their agendas online. Some still post just to the bulletin board outside. So we need to make sure that information is communicated consistently. The city council and city manager really should be working together to create a schedule of reports that are produced annually, quarterly, monthly, so that the city government, city management team knows what is expected of them and city residents know what they are to expect. So there is not the constant request for reports that really could have been anticipated and that just take up time at city council meetings to be asked for. The city council should also be cognizant of respecting open meeting laws so that everybody, so not only does the city council comply with laws, but also treats residents with respect and make sure that the right information is conveyed. Part of that too is how the city council evaluates. Part of that too is how the city council evaluates the three positions that report to it, including the city manager. The process is opaque right now or maybe not, I think, really actually done. If we think about any employee, we have expectations for them and they should be clear, they should be documented and it should be clear to everybody what the requirements are, what skills they should bring, et cetera. And what Cambridge does is actually report on, in effect, the grade that its city manager gets. So we should be doing that with the three positions, that report to the city council and really that should be the process for everybody in city government. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Ryan. This is a, this is a two-part question. I'm going to start off with accountability for city employees and I'm going to start with the manager right at the top. Look, I want you to know that I work for all of you, if elected. Now, the city manager works for the city council and I am blindly loyal to no one. The city council is going to set policy and set initiatives and I'm going to expect results so that I can come back to you periodically and tell you the progress that we're making in this city and in the district. Make no mistake, that's my policy. I evaluate the manager every Tuesday night. Many of you may watch and you see I ask questions and I want answers in a timely fashion. And if I don't like the way things are going, the manager will know it. And if all of you, as long as I serve you, feel that this city's not going in the right direction in any aspect, I want to hear all about it. And that's what I, and then we get into communication with all of you. And I have proven that, I have a track record in the last 12 months. I've had the first, since the district representation, I've had the first town hall take place in June, right here next door at the Riley School, very well attended. Prior to that, Andover Street, one of, just weeks after being appointed, the traffic engineer calls, Corey, Mass DOT, we have a grant for $4 million for Andover Street, we have to make a decision, asphalt or concrete? I said, well, that's not up to me. What did I do? I spearheaded an information session at the Riley School. You all spoke loud and clear. I had a signed petition to remain concrete, almost overwhelmingly. I put that petition on the manager's desk and said my constituents have spoken, it's going to remain concrete and that's what's going to happen in the spring. So I am a messenger for you. I work for you. Thank you very much.
The next question will begin with Erin Gendron and the topic is civic engagement and inclusion. The November 2023 municipal election saw a very dismal voter turnout of just under 10% of registered voters citywide. The Belvedere District had the highest neighborhood turnout with just over 17%, but still only a small fraction of registered voters. What is your personal record of community involvement and how would that help you go about increasing civic engagement and participation here in the district?
Okay, so I have served the city on the Board of Health for the past five years. So over the past five years, we have brought in some new initiatives, listening to our constituents who are saying that rodenticide is a, is a big issue. So we took that, we listened to it, did research and rodenticide has been banned on city property. We're moving that forward to the, to the state, we are going to continue to fight for this. We also listened to people who came to the Board of Health to talk to us about kratom. It is a supplement that is found, it was found just in a convenience store. Your 11-year-olds could go and buy it and it gives the same opioid effect as heroin, completely unregulated and so we, we've banned that in the, in the city of Lowell. I was on the Hunger and Homeless Commission as an agency representative when I worked for the Department of Children and Families. I, I'm on the area board from the Department of Children and Families now and I'm also on the Great Lowell Children's Fund Board. I think that to get people involved in civic engagement, it's, it's about voting and it's about us being interesting and wanting people to come out and to vote and that we're speaking to the needs of the community and that's the way that people are going to become more civically engaged.
Thank you. So I've walked the walk on community involvement and I'm going to continue to do so. I've served on several boards over the 15 years that we've lived in Lowell. UTech, the Library Foundation, the International Institute, the Early Childhood Council, the City of Learning, UMass Lowell School of Ed, the Free Soil Arts Collective. I volunteered with the city and CTI during the pandemic to create databases to support our restaurants and small businesses and I keep doing that work. You will find those databases as well as a list of nonprofits on my campaign website because that information is important to share and to be available to people. I attend flag raisings and festivals for every culture in this city whenever I can. That diversity of our city is so important for us to celebrate and to recognize that people of all, from all cultures can come together and do at those events. I do the hands-on work of sorting trash at the Folk Festival, which I love, but it's important to get your hands dirty and really be part of what is going on in the city. I write a newsletter twice a month of events and activities going on in Lowell, again to remind everybody how wonderful this city is and to encourage others to get involved, invite neighbors to participate in various events. And so leading by example is really something I do and we can all do and that will all continue. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Ryan. Look, there's no doubt voter turnout is, is a big concern, although Belvedere, we're certainly doing our part, but you know what, we, we could, we could do better too. Personally, I've been on the ballot, the city council, the last six out of seven elections and it's nice to see people come out. So I appreciate and thank you all for your engagement and your participation in voting. But citywide, not so much. And I just had a conversation just the other day with our community outreach liaison and said, what are we doing to the minority communities to increase voter turnout? So what we're doing is a collaboration with all our nonprofits, Coalition for a Better Acre, many organizations and nonprofits that have a large black and brown constituency, if you will, to communicate with them, encourage them to vote, help them with English language, free classes that we offer at the adult center in the, I know we have some trustees here tonight, the Paul Memorial Library, and to help combat digital representation, digital strategies too as well for this demographic. So there's much more we need to do along with our multilingual outreach that we're doing, direct mailers, festivals, you know. City of Lowell has had six ethnic festivals already since July. El Salvador, Haitian Festival, a Caribbean Festival, just to name a few. I've attended just about all of them. I love to see it, I love to see these ethnicities come together, this is what made our city so great and I'm going to be there for them and help them the best way I can. So we're going to continue to support these nonprofits and these English language services reach out to increase the voter turnout. Do you have my word on that? That's something that, it is incumbent upon me as an elected official to achieve and that's exactly what I'm going to try and do. Thank you very much.
Record of community involvement. I learned from the best. My father was involved with the community for 50 years. He coached Little League Baseball over at Gage Field for 50 years. I learned from him. They named the field after him over there. He then taught us what it is to be involved. My brother Larry, and I know this isn't about my family, but I think it's important for you to know where I come from. My brother Larry has coats from Man Above, named after my mother who passed away. He collects coats for the, for the children within the city that do not have the money to buy their own coats. I think it's a, it's a major thing that happens, they do it down at the firehouse, it's unbelievable. As far as mine, I've been involved with baseball, softball, lacrosse, football. If you have a child that lives in Belvedere or a grandchild, there's a real good chance that I have coached them at some point in time at Shed Park or at Colley Stadium. That's my involvement. I continue, I want to continue to do that. I serve on the board of the Friends of Lowell High as the president, I think that's important. And I also am on the board of Hall of Fame Board. So that's my involvement. How do we continue to get other people involved? I think it's through education. I think that we need to start in the schools and let the kids know that it's important to get out there and vote. We need to educate social media, you know, we need to improve voters within the city. Belvedere, like everyone else has said, comes out and does their part, but I think it's important that we engage every other section of the city so that they can have their choice in a counselor.
Our next question is going to begin with Belinda Duran and the topic is education, youth and schools. There's been a lot of discussion lately about how the city supports the schools between maintenance of effort and actual cash spending. If elected, what is your view of the city's obligation to the public schools and how would you go about improving educational opportunities as well as improving access to parks and green spaces used by our students?
So education was my path forward in life and I learned early on that we're all going to need to keep learning throughout our lives and reinventing ourselves several times as the economy changes and technology changes and cultural norms change. So we have to cultivate a culture of continuous learning in our schools so that everybody is able to succeed economically and socially. And that starts with the early childhood and the, I participated on the Lowell Early Childhood Council because it is so important that kids have the right education or opportunities really when they're small to start with their brain development in the right direction. I know that's a very poorly stated, but it is amazing when you start understanding the neuroscience that kids are not born reading, that is a learned skill, and they need supports as kids to be able to move forward with reading properly. The school committee is responsible for the schools and holding the superintendent accountable and we as a city need to be thinking about how are we budgeting for the schools? I've seen the maintenance of effort agreement, I don't know how that gets negotiated, but clearly there should be a real negotiation between the school committee and the city council and the city manager moving forward. Lowell should be a city where learning never stops. And so as we think about everything from early childhood through our schools, through the relationships with UMass Lowell and MCC, it's important that we think about learning and continue to support it both financially and culturally. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, Ryan. Education, extremely, extremely important. In a city such as Lowell, that has played within some districts, multi-generational poverty, how does a young child, boy or girl bust out of multi-generational poverty? One word, education. Our education has to be top-notch, there's no two ways about it. And I have made a strong commitment towards education in just over 12 months. The city council made sure the classrooms in difficult financial times were not cut. I supported transferring $2 million from our rainy day fund to the school department to make sure parents and teachers in the classrooms were not touched, along with our after-school programs. And none of it was, they were, after-school programs were extremely successful here in the district. So I'm going to make sure, and I want you to hold me to it, that our schools are adequately funded, number one. We meet and exceed year-to-year net schools funding. I want to make sure our schools are adequately maintained, which they have not been, and this has been a decades-old problem. But this council has acknowledged that, realizes the flaws over the years and school maintenance is certainly one of them. So we formed a facilities, brand-new facilities department to start with our $400 million asset at the Lowell High School that will trickle to the other 28 schools to improve school maintenance. I want to make sure our kids go to school and have a healthy breakfast and lunch every day. Very important. You can't learn and study if you don't have good nutrition. So these are my three top priorities for school that I assure will get done. I gave many teachers in the district my word and I will live up to that and I want you to hold me accountable. Thank you very much.
City schools and their budget, right? I have four children, all of them have gone through Lowell school system. It's important to me. If you don't think it is, I don't know how you wouldn't. The city of Lowell is doing what it is that they can do with the restraints that we have as far as our budget. We're in trying times. Agencies across the state have to, have to tighten the belt a bit and the Lowell school system is in the same position. We need to tighten our belt. We've given them the money that we're supposed to give, that the state regulation says that we need to give them. I think that the departments need to tighten their belts. It's not what you want to hear, but it's the reality. We don't have the money other than what we've given them. If we did, we would give it, I would push for it. As far as the maintenance of the schools, we're in shambles. Our, our schools are in shambles and I think you know it. We don't have heat in some of them, the high school's being done over, which is great. There's other schools that don't have heat, they don't have AC. We need to place money into that account in order to work on the schools. There's no, there's no two ways about it. So if we want to do both maintenance and educate our children, we have to, we have to cut the budget somewhere and that's where it stands. Thank you.
So I think that right now Lowell needs to get back to the basics. We need to fully fund our schools because our children are our future. They deserve to go to schools that are pristine places of education, where the environment is there for learning, that create, that they're in an environment where they're comfortable and able to sit and focus and don't have outside distractions and they're able to learn. I think we need to get back to the basics. We need to fully fund our schools and I think a part of the way that we get back to the basics are, Lowell has a very different way that our school systems are set up. So the buildings are owned by the city, but the school budget and the maintenance is done by the school department. I think that those things need to be separate. We need to make sure that the city is taking care of the buildings that they own and that they are pristine and we need to let the, the school department focus on education. I believe in our teachers and giving them every resource that they need. I think that those two things should be separate. We should be taking care of our buildings and making sure that our children are in a place where they are able to access education and they're able to learn in a comfortable environment and that our buildings are kept up to pristine the way that they should be. I also think that we need to fund our nurses, it's important. We have 31 schools in the district and only 29 full-time nurses. It's just, we're Robin Peter to pay Paul all the time and those are things that are the basics that are important to our kids' education. Thank you. Oh, oh, sorry.
I, I believe it's got to come down this way, that this is, this is going to be the final question of the questions round and Corey Blanchard will be the first person to At the end of this election cycle, one of you on the stage tonight will serve as the District 3 City Counselor representing the other three candidates as part of the Belvedere neighborhood. If you are not elected to the city council, how would you plan to stay engaged with the community and ensure your voice is being heard as a constituent?
Thank you for the question, Ryan, it's a very good one. Look, I have been involved in this city since 2000 in all facets of governments. I've been on the council and I've been off the council, but I never walked away. I stayed engaged in the opioid task force, festivals, I stayed engaged in the opioid task force, festivals, and committees all throughout the city, and that's going to continue if I'm not elected. But make no mistake, I want to thank the three challengers for running. It's what makes Belvedere great, with its engagement, and I appreciate their involvement. But I feel strongly that I am the clear choice in this election, based on the experience and the knowledge that we are going to need going forward. But if it doesn't work out, I'm going to ask, sit down, that they hear my ideas, and I hope to hear theirs, if I'm the last one standing. Absolutely, we still love the city. We're all rowing in the same direction for one common goal: to make this district the very best it can be, to make the city the very best it can be. But I believe I've done that in just over 12 months with the progress that we have going in this district right now, and that's what I want to continue. I'm working on other initiatives as well that I can't fulfill if I'm not elected. So, I ask for your vote and still the engagement of the challengers here tonight, and thank you again. And I'm always open for a conversation, a coffee, at any time, and that goes for the challengers and all of you. I personally involve in just about all aspects of the city and have been for some time. I much prefer a one-on-one engagement or conversation rather than social media. It's necessary, but I like meeting with people. I like seeing your issues. You got a problem? I like to go to your house so I got a better knowledge and understanding of what's affecting you. I'll take one-on-one over social media any day of the week. I guess I'm old-school, but that's my approach. So, I will be there for you in time of crisis.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So, if I'm still standing at the end of this, I hope that the three of us or the four of us will still be engaged with each other. You have a tough choice to make here. There's four candidates that really want to do the job, and it's going to be a tough decision for everyone sitting in this room to choose between one of the four of us. With that being said, I'm happy to be up here. I'm glad to be up here. I'm a little nervous being up here. If you haven't noticed, I'm the only one that asked for a question to be reread. It's nerves. I'm a person that can meet on the street, and I'll talk your ear off, and you can talk mine off. I'll see you in Market Basket. We'll have a great conversation. This is not my wheelhouse, and I apologize with my quick answers, but it's not my wheelhouse. So, being engaged, I'm going to continue to be engaged. I've always been engaged with the city. I love this city. I just want to be the representative from District Three. Give me the opportunity, and I'll show you what I can do. I can't show you here because we're in a larger audience, and I'm a little nervous. I like the chuckle. But if you talk to me one-on-one, it's a whole different ballgame. So, I apologize for having the question read a second time. It's just nerves, and I hope that the four of us can get along at the end of all of this. We're all going to still be involved. We all have big cities, we all have big families within the city, and I'm not going anywhere. Thank you.
So, my appointment for the Board of Health goes into next year. So, I will continue to be engaged because I will stay on the Board of Health. It's a great view to see how the city council crosses over. There's a lot of engagement between the two. It's been my pleasure to serve on the Board of Health. It's been great. I have to say one thing that makes me so proud to sit up here with these three is that we have been kind. There has not been, I don't think anybody has had a bad thing to say. I feel like we've been helpful to each other. You know, it's a tight race. We get it. This is district representation. It's really hard to go against your neighbor, but at the end of the day, we're all neighbors. So, I think we can all continue to be engaged, and it's been great. Thank you, guys.
So, win or lose, I'm going to do what I've always been doing. I'll collaborate with anyone and everyone to serve our city. Win or lose, I'll continue to serve on boards, attend festivals, do projects, write my newsletter. And win or lose, I'm going to reach out to all of the people that I talked with, door-knocking and way before door-knocking, to engage them in conversation and problem-solving. I have met so many wonderful people over the last several months, and I take notes on the conversations we have because we need to reach out to each other, to talk about downtown, to talk about homelessness, to talk about other issues that our city faces. There are ideas that come out in one-on-one conversations that don't otherwise come out, and we need to harness that energy and work together. So, win or lose, I will continue to do everything I can with everybody here, with everybody here, with everybody in Lowell and outside Lowell, because we can bring in lots of great ideas from elsewhere. But that said, I think I have unique skills as both a problem solver and a community advocate, so I think my next role should be as city councilor, but I will be happy to work with you no matter what title I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the question portion of tonight's event. The next part of the event is going to be the lightning round. This is going to be where the pitches slow down a little bit, and we learn a little bit about the candidates with just very brief answers. So, to continue the rotation, Cory started with the last question, so we'll kick it off with Dan Finn. And again, just a few seconds, one word or one sentence.
I'll be fine with that.
What is your favorite Lowell spot to grab something to eat?
Put me on the spot here. Everybody knows where I go, and if you don't, you haven't been listening to me. I mentioned them. I'm supposed to be just a couple of seconds, right? Sorry. Yes, this is the time I can talk, right? Cobblestones.
The Old Court every Friday night.
Cobblestones and Gary's Restaurant in our district.
I'm pretty simple. Milan for a cheesesteak. In the district, we got to support our local businesses. Thank you.
All right. The next lightning round question will kick off with Erin. If you have out-of-town guests, where are you taking them?
There's so many places. Probably the Werthen. I like the history there.
Typically, I start with a tour of Lowell and really going through the history, showing them the mills, the falls, and the university, and really just getting a sense of Lowell as a whole, and then we'll dig deeper.
Thank you. I do like Erin's answer with the history involved with the Werthen, but I would say Cobblestones. It's a very, very nice place inside. Now, great service, great food, and it's got parking. It's in the downtown. Thank you.
It's Cobblestones. Scott loves me, I know. It's Cobblestones, and then we're going to the auditorium.
All right. This one with you first, Belinda. What is your favorite Lowell event?
Oh, there is no one favorite Lowell event because they are all amazing. As I said, I go to festivals, I go to flag raisings, everything. But I do love sorting trash at the Lowell Folk Festival.
I don't know about sorting trash, but I'll tell you what. We are in Festival City, USA. I've been very involved in all city festivals for many decades, but the Lowell Folk Festival, it's the biggest and it's the best, and I urge you all to attend. Thank you.
Winterfest. I participated in the human dog sled race a long time ago. I was in the sled because I'm the smallest guy, but that would be mine.
So, this one isn't the biggest Lowell thing, but my family hosts an underground 5K on Thanksgiving, and it's growing in popularity, and it's got pretty big. We run around Belvedere, so that's my favorite.
All right. The next one will start with Cory. What book are you currently reading?
How to Win an Election: Contest an Election. No, it's a book by Frank Lutz, Words That Matter, political words to convey your message better and more direct. Man, it's a very interesting book, and I believe it helped me throughout the years as long with experience and maturity and confidence that things are involved with public speaking and government. Thank you.
You're not going to like this answer. I haven't read a book in a long time. I have four kids, and I know I've said that a few times tonight, but they keep me running around, and I look at policy all day long at my job. So, the last thing I want to do is read something when I go home. Sorry.
So, I actually was in a used bookstore recently, and I happened to come across a book that is a blog. It's an account of all of Dick How's blogs. There's a couple of other people, and I love Lowell history, so I've been reading that. It's pretty good.
So, I read multiple books at a time, depending. There's some in the bathroom, some in the bedroom. So, I'm reading Education is Freedom, which somebody here recommended. I'm reading Abundance, and I'm also reading for a book club Truly Madly Guilty, or just about to start that one. Thank you.
All righty. And the final question of the lightning round, kick it off with Dan. Who is your favorite famous Lowellian?
So, I got asked this question not long ago on a radio station, and they asked me about who I would name something after. I apologize. I'm supposed to be two seconds. Marty Mian needs some acknowledgement. He does, and I talked about it after I made my answer, and I had wished that I had said that Marty Mian needs recognition. He's done so much for the city, and at some point in time, there'll be a statue or a bridge or a school named after him.
Okay, so now I can't remember the name. So, there is a skater from Lowell, and he won an Olympic medal. Manny Santiago. So, I just think that's a really cool thing, that it's a guy who won an Olympic for being a skater. And he lives in Puerto Rico, and my boys are Puerto Rican, so I love that.
So, on that radio show I mentioned, I would name something, that crater after Lucy Larkum. But I think, when I think about the impact of Lowell, I think Paul Tsongas is really the person we all admire.
Thank you. Yep, we've had some great leaders over the years, people, that made Lowell what it is today. But I'm going to agree with Danny. As of late, the last many decades, it's President Mian and all his accomplishments, from UMass Lowell to where it is today, up to the Link Projects and what's about to happen. So, that would be my choice. Thank you.
All righty. That's the end of the lightning round, and we're going to finish this up with closing statements. Each candidate will have 30 seconds to close out the evening, and we will start next up on the list, Erin Gendron.
I just want to thank everyone for being here, to thank the Belvedere Neighborhood Association for putting this on. Thank you, Ryan, for moderating for us, and thank you to the three of you for running a clean campaign. It's been a pleasure. I respectfully and humbly ask for your vote on September 9th. When you're in the booth, please remember, run with Gendron. Thank you.
So, thank you, everybody, for organizing this event, for attending, for watching it live or later on. I'd appreciate your vote on September 9th, but early voting starts this Saturday, August 30th. So, please think about voting anytime the polls are open. You'll find the information about voting on the city election website or my website. Thank you.
Thank you again to all those involved to make tonight's forum possible, and thank you again to the challengers, and there'll be many future conversations. But tonight, I'm going to ask for your vote on September 9th, for the accomplishments, for what's been done in this district, what I've accomplished in just over 12 months. This district has a lot of momentum going on, and I want to continue that with projects in the pipeline, and then I will facilitate moving forward. But I can't do it on the sidelines, people. Let's go with experienced leadership on September 9th and vote Cory Blanchard. Thank you very much.
I get the last word. Thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. I want to thank everyone that was involved. It's been a great opportunity to sit up here and have you kind of get to know who we are. So, thank you for being out here. I know school's started and summer's over, and you have busy schedules, and I appreciate it. The message I would just want to send is that I'm going to represent you. What you tell me to do, I am going to do. Believe me when I say it. Ten seconds. So, thank you again. I'm number one on the ballot on September 9th. I don't know how I got number one. I assumed it was going to be Cory. Mine doesn't say anything underneath it, so I get hidden up there in the top, but please look for my name. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go get a round of applause for the candidates. Thank you to the Belvedere Neighborhood Committee for putting this on. Thank you to the LTC for hosting this, which will be on their website as well as their YouTube channel, and thank you to all the attendees. A quick reminder, early voting does start this Saturday at the Senior Center. There's going to be five days to early vote, Saturday, August 30th, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Sunday and Monday are not voting days, and then we go from Tuesday through Friday. Tuesday is 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's the late day. Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday are all 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. And then finally, if you can't make any of those, election day is Tuesday, September 9th, where the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at the standard locations, which for this district is the Riley School and the Pine School. The next Belvedere Neighborhood Association meeting will be on Wednesday, September 17th, and that is going to be on Zoom, so make sure you meet with the committee or sign up to get more information about that. And then finally, on behalf of the BNA and tonight's planning committee, thank you very much for attending the candidate forum. Have a great night.